We'll come to order. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight for our January public meeting of the Borough Council of Marsville. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Virginia, you want to take a roll call, please, of council?
Yes, thank you. Mary Anderson?
Good.
Ms. Ebelhart?
Here.
Mr. LaHwa?
Here.
Mr. Luthen?
Here.
Mr. Minett?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Poor thing.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
Our borough solicitor?
Scott Holbert, on behalf of Flag Your Own Associates.
Thank you, Scott. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia. Before we proceed to announcements and presentations, I would like to make a motion or call for a motion to amend tonight's agenda to include a new action item 8E, which is a call for a motion to approve layout submitted to council for four murals to be painted on the snack bar at Williamson Park.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Well, I have a comment, if I may.
On the motion?
Yeah, on the motion. Why are we doing this? Why wasn't this presented on a timely basis where we could instead for the last second? Some of this I see goes back to October, goes back to October 26.
There's a misunderstanding as far as circulating all these to council on a timely basis. I'll take full responsibility for that, so that's your answer. Blame it on the president, okay?
Actually, yeah, I'm a little confused because council was not aware that these murals were being painted, and I'm not quite sure why the two council people did not inform council that the murals are painted and the murals are already painted.
Council was, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize.
And I have nothing against the group that did it, but we had a conversation, and I'm confused why there was no communication with all of council from the people that were running this.
May I speak? I, first of all, our rules are that everything goes through our council president, and that was done, and it was asked to disseminate, and that was a while back ago. So that's, it just was a mistake. I mean, we, I submitted it to Bob.
I'm confused about that as well. I thought our rules were, when dealing with the borough manager, everything goes through Bob. Everything else could be spoken to all of council.
That's not how.
Okay, this puts me in an awkward position, and I'm willing to take all the heat for this. There was no confusion. We've been talking about these murals for the last 10 months or 12 months, maybe. Council has seen some renderings of it from time to time. When these were provided to me, I frankly didn't realize that council had not yet approved them, or else I would have directed them to get the proper approval. The mural painting started yesterday. As many observers point out, they had questions about what was going on, whether it was approved or not. At this point, it's up to council, and by the way, I don't mean to be talking about the merits of the case, because we're only talking about this motion, but, you know, I believe that rather than throw the baby out with the bathwater, we should consider, do we want to approve these murals? If so, let's continue with the work that started yesterday with the volunteers that already showed up, and if we don't want to continue with the murals, then we'll paint over them, and the majority of council has been heard. But to fight over how we got here and to, doesn't really get us very far. So let's just blame it all on me, and that way you can just fire me, and you don't have to be picking on each other. I really think we need to get away from making these personal issues as to who brought something up, or who didn't bring something up, or why it wasn't passed, but you're all entitled to vote your conscience, vote however way you want. I don't think that is productive, however, to go back and talk about each step along the way and who did what, or who failed to do what.
I haven't seen those murals. I don't know what the plans look like. I don't have any plans.
Well, Mr. President, sorry. We passed a copy out tonight. I recognize it's last minute. So vote no. I mean, I really don't know what you want me to, what you think we should do at this point.
Look, perhaps somebody can brief council, perhaps you two or Mr. President, what's the cost to the borough? Was paperwork ever presented? What's the status of this? Just voting, asking us to vote yes so they can go on with the project nobody knows anything about? That's wrong. So perhaps one of you two can give us a brief on what your proposal is, since you haven't bothered to do it prior.
There was a presentation by the group, the Rock Coalition, that you were all present at last fall, that talked about the murals and what was going to be happening. Once a month, Councilwoman Sherlock gives a report about what is going on with the mural project. If you haven't heard that, that's on you, but, you know, I guess, I don't know what to say. The group has been, we've been reporting on it for months, on it, about what they were going to be doing.
How much is this going to cost?
It's going to cost you zero. It's going to cost the borough zero. Zero. That's it. No taxpayer money, nothing. It was given to the coalition by a grant and its volunteers who are working on it with youth.
I seem to remember that meeting. It was last April.
Was it last April?
It was last April, and the man who came here and spoke said that there would be a plan, and it would be put before council, and council would vote on the plan, and that has never happened.
It's happening now.
We also discussed it at the, sorry to ask to be recognized, we discussed it at the Parks and Recs meeting. In fact, I think at the October meeting, we actually had the plans and showed them at that time, and that's, and from there, I sent them to Mr. Paul. And I, you know, as a president, there's a lot on their plate to make it all happen. We've had a challenging year. We've had some staff missing, and to have to think that he has to shoulder all this burden is, I think, is wrong. There was miscommunication, and nothing was done nefariously, and I agree with Bob. Either vote up or vote down. And the cost is zero, so if you want to put that in the motion, go right ahead.
Any further discussion?
Are you still on the borough staff involved?
No, borough staff was not involved.
Has this group taken that the insurance policy, if somebody gets hurt, we're not liable?
Yes, they have.
Has it been submitted to the borough?
Yes, it has.
On a timely basis?
It was done on the day of.
So it was not on a timely basis. This is when the borough hall was closed, you dropped it in a box so nobody could see it beforehand.
Yes, Andrew.
Excuse me, Andrew, the facts are the facts.
You're right, but maybe.
If you want to embarrass people, you can, but.
Maybe, maybe, but I want to hear the facts.
The borough wasn't closed yesterday, Mr. Lubin.
Any further comments?
This, what we're voting on right now is just a motion to even put it on the agenda. Is that correct? I want to confirm.
Correct. We're not voting on the motion, we're voting the motion to amend the agenda.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, do we need to do a roll call, or? Do a roll call, please, Virginia.
Yes, yes, I will. Mary Ebelhart?
Yes.
Mr. LaHwa?
No.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Minett?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Are you here?
Yeah.
I say yes.
This is Mrs. Murray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when you're doing the motion, are we going to discuss these plans?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, announcements. Oh, yes, we had a, we convened for an executive session before tonight's public meeting to discuss certain personnel issues and some ongoing litigation. Public comment? Scott's bringing me the list.
And please be advised, the litigation matter that was discussed is on the agenda for today's evening. It involves a potential zoning hearing board avail involving 70, excuse me, 70 East Bridge Street here in Marsville.
Okay, John Seneviva? Sorry about that pronunciation.
That's all right, it's close enough. Seneviva.
Seneviva, thank you. State your name and address in any of three minutes.
My name is John Seneviva, 467 Stockham Avenue. I was asked in September 2021 to become part of the Marsville Economic Development Corporation. I submitted my request and became their secretary, in spite of how terrible our legacy The reason I'm here is to let you know that MEDC is headed in a great direction due to the efforts of Robin Reifmeyer. She's the person who inspired, designed, and worked with the borough to have those banners displayed on two parts of town with the advertising for the winter fresh. I thought they looked great. Clearly, the goal was to get folks that are going from here to there through Marsville to come back and visit, which I thought was a great idea. One of her current goals is, and now one of MEDC's goals, is to get organizations promoting Marsville to communicate and cooperate so that we can make Marsville a destination for those seeking history, food and beverage, affordable homes, entertainment, business, and the natural beauty of the river and the canal. I believe she's just getting started to make the organization live up to the goals of promoting economic development in Marsville. I urge you to reappoint her and help her realize the goals of cooperation and communication. Her goals, along with the corporation's goals, should be your goals as well, to make Marsville a destination, to make Marsville a home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Parry? I said that correctly? I'm not sure if I read your handwriting correctly, Susan, I'm sorry.
Parry, uh-huh.
Parry, okay.
Good evening. My name is Susan Parry. I'm from 233 Stockham Avenue in Marsville, and what I have here is a simple invitation from the Marsville Senior Center. Of course, we're a nonprofit, we have all sorts of things going on. We do have it on the TV to advertise it. I brought some flyers, I put them on the table in the back. Tomorrow, we have a community breakfast from 9:00 to 10:30. It's the community, open to everyone. I know we don't have a very large volume, but news travels fast, so just wanted to extend that invitation. And also, on January 21st, we're having a soup and chili.
Susan, excuse me, is your mic on?
I don't know. It says it's on. Hello? Hello, hello?
Give me a second. It's on.
John, is there a, no volume?
No, no.
Not on the receiver?
There isn't, yeah, but it's all, it's loud. If I turn it up too loud, it'll.
So you just have to hear my, I'll just talk louder?
You can move closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Susan, we know you can talk louder.
Okay, so I did say tomorrow, we're having a community breakfast from 9:00 to 10:30, all you can eat, and I'm not cooking, so it'll be great. And also, on the 21st of January, we have a soup and chili, and this is all volunteers from the Senior Center. We're all making the soups and chilies, salads, desserts, rolls, butter, beverages. It's only $7. We really would like to extend the invitation to all of you and all of the people who could spread the word from here. At any rate, we have it, we have the flyers in the back, and it's just a simple invitation. Thank you very much.
I'm just going to say it louder, so it's tomorrow on Wednesday from 9:00 to 10:30, and the soup and chili is February 21st?
January 21st.
January 21st, I'm sorry.
Soup and chili is from 12:00 to 3:00.
12:00 to 3:00 on January 21st.
$7, children under 12, five.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Rice.
And that's at the Marsville Senior Center, right, Susan?
Yes.
31 East Cleveland Avenue.
I'm trying. Okay, I have a point of order before I start. I just did it now because I didn't want to interrupt the meeting. Towards the bottom of the agenda, there are two openings on the MMA listed, and along with the people who have submitted letters of interest. I know one of those, the one that the current term expires, I think it was January 22nd, it wasn't announced until less than two weeks ago, and it is not currently advertised on the borough website, so I'm asking, are you going to be voting on that opening tonight?
Well, if you're telling us that, if you're telling us that we haven't given enough notice, I guess we won't. Mr. Solicitor, what do you think?
We have given notice, we have given notice in that we said that there were openings for the MMA.
Mrs. Solicitor?
I mean, there's no required notice period for these. I mean, it's entirely been your policy or discretion and how you advertised and done them yet. There is no legal requirement for these positions.
And it's been, it's been out for two weeks?
It has not been out for two weeks. It's been known for two weeks, but it's not on the borough website anywhere.
There has been openings on the website.
Yes, and it is not listed.
Virginia, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know I have the website up as we're speaking, and it is listed on there as open for vacancies, and I believe it's been there since the last meeting.
It has.
I know for a fact, I talked to John Morenda on January 5th, and he told me, he had told you, Ms. Danko, that day, that there was going to be an unexpected opening.
Right. And we still continue to have the vacancies on the website, whether that vacancy was taking place then or not, we still continue to have that, and I had informed Mr. Morenda that it is already on the website.
I don't think I've heard an answer to my question definitively.
I will have to revert back to councilists to their decision.
It's been available to the public for how long? Since the last meeting? Then what is it that Mr. Rice is referring to, that it wasn't listed?
The most recent.
I believe Mr. Rice is saying that he's looking for each individual opening, and we, what we do is we post it as there's openings. That's how we post it. So we don't have each individual opening, and we, this information was, when it was provided to us, we had already had it on the borough website because we know, we knew we had openings, so that's how it was advertised, as openings.
So basically, what we have is, the way it's advertised is there's an opening, okay? And let's say we had one opening, and let's say we all of a sudden had two openings. We have three letters that came in for it, so whether there's one opening, two openings, or three openings, we got letters. So I think it's, if, if, I, if I, I just want to guess or speculate that you feel that someone may have gotten slighted because an opening happened and they didn't get their letter in, but there was an opening they could have submitted a letter to.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah.
I can't, I don't want to assume it, but I think Mr. Rice might be referring to the vacancy that happened on the 5th, is that right, the 5th?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and I think everyone here has also said that we did have the positions available because we have people that were going to, their terms were up, so we were already advertising for two. We advertised, and I will say, after every meeting for at least two years that I know of, it's an announcement that says which ones are open, for all the, for all different ones, but there are, I'm just looking at it now, I'm sorry. I'm looking to see, I think there are two, there are two that are up, I think, right now, right? Their terms, their terms were up, I'm sorry. There were two terms that were up, or is it just the one?
It's not, it doesn't matter.
One term was up, I'm sorry, yeah, one term was up and one resigned.
Honestly, the reason I didn't put in a letter of interest is I didn't want to go against Jane. I think she belongs as chair, so.
Okay.
I'm going to leave it at that. You guys decide what you want to do. I had a legitimate question.
Yeah, well, when we get to that, we'll discuss it further, Don, because I understand your point, and I want to make sure that even though we're legally within our rights to vote on both, if this is a departure from our policy and people have other expectations, I don't want to, I don't want to stomp on those, and so we can discuss it a little bit further when we get to that point in the meeting.
Fine.
I need to think about it. I wasn't aware of this problem.
Hence my point of interest.
Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Paul.
Hardly. I'm sorry, did you have other comment?
I have a.
You get the full three minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Last October, I made a right-to-know request for Marsville levy certification application slash report. The right-to-know officer, who is Ms. Danko, denied that request. I appealed to the OOR, the State Officer Open Records, and my appeal was also denied. I want to explain why the boroughs and the officer open records denials were misguided. Neither Ms. Danko nor Ms. Lara, the attorney for the OOR, asked why I requested the levy report. I suspect they believed that was irrelevant to their decision, but it is very relevant to why myself and the public need to read this report. Ms. Danko stated in her attestation to Ms. Lara, quote, "The preliminary report slash application contains information concerning the specifications for how the system operates and areas where repair and improvements are necessary. The levy system infrastructure is critical to the physical safety and security of the residents of Marsville near the Delaware River," end quote. Please note that Ms. Danko states here that the levy needs repairs and improvements. This is why it is vital that the public have this information, are that rural lives at risk in a flood? Will their homes and property be flooded? We don't know, because the borough is more concerned about sabotage than a flood. Ms. Lara, in her final determination, stated, quote, "Damage to the levy system could result in unmanageable flood events with serious, perhaps deadly, consequences." Yet she is more concerned with sabotage than a flood. Floods are one of the most powerful forces in nature. The concern here should be the island residents. They deserve to know if they are at risk, or if not, that information is valuable because their flood insurance may be reduced. I'm asking three things to help correct the withholding of the preliminary levy certification report. One, give me the report. Two, council members, request a copy of the report and read it. Decide for yourself on the health of the levy. Three, Marsville residents of the island, or those homes north of Williamson Park on the levy side of Delmore Avenue, request a copy of the report. You have a right to know the health of the levy if your life and your property is at risk. The borough's website has a right-to-know request form. Fill it out online or turn it in at the Borough Hall. The residents of Marsville have a right and a need to review the preliminary levy certification report slash application. Please, council, help make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Panzita?
Kathy Panzita, 401 Hellcrest. Looking at your agenda, I don't know if you're going to elaborate on eight, say, has that a re, I mean, we hear this gentleman's name sometimes during the budget things and all. Is this additional work? I didn't get an answer when I asked about some of the, you know, similar things in your December meeting. I would say, I would like to thank John later and whoever was involved. I will say that on Comcast, Channel 22 did, in the month of December, start getting music back. I wasn't planning on coming to your meeting tonight, I was really planning on listening to it, even if it meant unsynchronized, having the sound on one, but I bring it to your attention is that sadly, the little exchange at the beginning of the meeting, people really do try to look at these meetings, and I know I'll probably watch it two times at least tomorrow via the website, and pick and choose, but when you're talking and there's just a visual of all eight of you, you're very small, even if you have an 80-inch screen and you're running your smart TV through your computer through it, you're small, and we don't understand your voices and your distinction. So if you could maybe just be more cognitive to you twos and who you're saying, be specific. If you want to make one of those comments, then just sort of name the names. It just saves us all time zone on what, trying to follow through on your meeting, and speaking over each other, it's very, very hard when people just jump in or whatever, but I do think, because at least the music was good on Channel 22, we'll see next time. And last time, I forgot to wish all a Happy New Year because I ran out of time, so.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Okay. Moving on to approval of minutes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion that we make this in block? Or do you want to do them individually?
Block is fine with me.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes, the budget meeting, special meeting, minutes of November 11th, 2022, November 22nd, 2022, and November 30th, 2022.
I'm sorry, the first one, November 21st?
21st, did I say it wrong? Sorry.
November 11th, that's okay.
Oh.
Okay.
The 11th.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Finance, treasurer's report, you all have a list of the bill attached to the agenda? Any, anything else with respect to treasurer's report? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to make, for the public's knowledge, the bill list that we just approved was for $577,590.45.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. The mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Happy New Year, everybody. It's been, you know, it's always a little weird time of the year.
Do we have motions, first and second, or no?
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Mine's too loud, other, yeah.
Who did that microphone?
Okay.
I've never really needed a microphone in my life, but anyway, Happy New Year, everybody. I, you know, I hope we're already forgetting the right '22 and '23, that's always a difficult transition. But, you know, I'm glad everybody's here, I always like to see our comments and our emails, and it just means a lot when the public stays involved every month, because it's like I say up here every month, it, it helps and makes more of a difference than, than some people probably think. So I appreciate it and I encourage it. I'd like to go on to congratulate our, the new manager of our senior center, Bonnie, and thank you, Sue, for inviting me over there to meet her. She did mention that breakfast tomorrow, and I'd like to add that this breakfast tomorrow morning, $3 for breakfast, you can't even make yourself breakfast at home for three bucks. So let's get out there and support the senior center. I'll be there tomorrow helping them serve people. And, and, you know, and then Saturday's another event, always a good chance to, to support the senior center. Let's see. Now, you know what, I'm looking, I guess that's about all I have coming up, other than, you know, we got one year coming ahead of us, we got an election coming up and three of our four awards. And I know a lot of people think and think and think every year, well, now's the time if it's something you want to do, you know, call someone you trust to talk about it, and, you know, follow your heart if it's something you want to do. And, and that's no, nothing against anybody up here, I think we're all up here for amazing different reasons, and we have a great group of people, but if it's something that's on your heart, now's the time to try it. All right? So everybody enjoy the rest of your month, and I'm always available if you need me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief McClay, the police chief's report.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Lou Al's paperwork is in, and is on the manager's desk. He should be starting any meeting. I'm just waiting for her last stamp of approval. He did send in today coursework, move, start taking classes. Classes aren't scheduled until June. Then from there, he'll be able to, he will have to do 70 inspections to be fully certified, plus taking the additional class that they'll be giving too. So there's a lot of training involved in this. Like I emailed the mayor yesterday that he'll be able to do this if our manpower is sufficient enough to handle the radio calls and the coverage on the street. But without that, or we do a lot more overtime, whichever one. So I will try my best to do what we can, like I said. So he has to go to class for three weeks in June from there. What else we got going on? The homicide on Lenora Street, he made an arrest on, on a related matter. We did not clear the homicide yet, a lot of work being done, a lot of people's way. And I know the councilwoman has saw us out there, we brought the FBI in the other day, so we've been doing a lot of work. Besides that, I really don't want to answer any questions into public related to that. What else we got going on? Are we meeting tomorrow with Code, Robinson Brown Street?
I sent an email to everyone again to just recap this, to make sure that we're definitely on for tomorrow.
Okay, so, personal to you.
I'll be there, thank, yeah, I heard about it, thank you.
I don't know if you're invited, but it's up to the Borough manager. But it seems like your, your Google lounge started to get busy again, so.
That's, yes.
Code, I'll see what we can do about that.
Yes, unfortunately, we had two other matters that came up in between when we were trying to schedule the meeting, so I'm unsure if we're gonna follow through tomorrow or not, if we're, if we're going to move the, the date and time. But I'll, I'll definitely let everybody know.
Okay.
But thank you.
All right, lastly, everybody saw another truck hit the, we were out there again the other day, just everybody's gonna ask, you got two tickets.
Was there three trucks that hit? Because I saw on Facebook, well, there was, I saw on Facebook, and they had pictures. There was one on Pennsylvania and Philadelphia, and then there was another truck underneath on Washington, somebody posted.
If you don't listen to Facebook, one truck.
I know, but there was a picture.
One truck.
Okay.
Hit the top, there was a plow that was sticking at the top, hit the overpass, broke out the back of the door, the door of the truck, it fell onto the street. So we got two tickets, pretty expensive tickets. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, can I ask, one of your officers made a comment to my neighbor who asked me, they, they said that the first ward is becoming more, well, I don't want to repeat what they said, but more laden with, with crime? Is, is that true?
Do you see what goes out every week? There's, I don't know if what we've got down there.
Okay.
Just your homicide.
Right, excluding that.
Do you know of anything?
I don't, and I was, that's why I was shocked to hear that. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, real quick, I just wanted to add one other thing, thank you. Tomorrow night, there is an EDC meeting at the library, and this is something, they generally are not open to the public, but this one is, so if that's something you're interested in, please try to make it to that tomorrow as well. Okay? Thank you. I just didn't want to leave that out. It's, is it 7:00 or 7:30?
7:30.
7:30.
Okay, the Borough manager's report.
Good evening, everyone, Happy New Year. I, I also wanted to mention, chief, the Borough was just notified that the grant with the RDA and the county had been approved for two more police vehicles. So thank you to everyone involved in all of that hard work. This is wonderful news for the Police Department, that, that means three grants for three vehicles within this past year. Very positive work. So thank you again to all. Council has a copy of the manager's report. We're still continuing to work on the Bridge Street project, we're awaiting the information as to the new grant that we're trying to acquire for the engineering. I also would like to report on some of the new businesses that we have had come to town and be approved to be in our wonderful Morrisville area. 101 Washington Street, the business is called About Time Auto Detailing Salon, same area. Twilight Kombucha Tea Company, in that same vicinity, Skinned by Taylor Personal Service. And 650 West Bridge Street is office space, it's Cars for Less Outlet. So we're very proud to announce that we continue to bring businesses to town to flourish our, our Bridge Street area. I have no further comments at this time, if council has any questions, I would certainly entertain them. Thank you.
Committee reports, do we have any committee reports tonight?
The next Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, which is open to the public, all of them are always open to the public, is next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. And this is gonna, I'm trying to get out the information, this is where we're going to discuss whether we're interested in putting, like, alcohol for special events in the park. So I've, I've reached out to several different businesses in town, they've been really supportive. When I talked to them, that, you know, I, I can't decide myself, but I'd really like the input before it's brought to the council. And the, one of the owners of Yarding Beer and another place said he thought this was an excellent idea, that we were, that we were doing this way so we can have community input. So it's, it'll be here, 7:00 PM, on the, I think it's the 24th, and all are welcome. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanted to make an announcement again, so that everyone has a, an understanding that any event that does take place, that, that these events go through the Borough office. There's paperwork at the Borough office that must be filled out ahead of time, there's insurance requirements, there's volunteer requirements. So I'm just sending a reminder that we please have everyone that's on council or anyone from the public that's interested in events to please follow through with these items ahead of time. We ask that they be done 30 days ahead of time, that's what's on the applications. Of course, if it's, you know, a little off of those, that timing, we're certainly, we try to work with everyone, but I encourage everyone to please follow through with this. It makes things much easier for the staff, and we can, you know, organize, and, and it's that time of the year where everybody wants to have events. So it's an exciting time of the year. So we certainly don't want to take away from that excitement, we, we want the flow of the applications to come through the Borough office downstairs. If there's something that has to be approved by council, the staff will provide that to myself, and I'll bring it to council for approval. But with, with the understanding that we need time, of course, because we have the, you know, the committee meetings, and then we also have the council meetings, and anything that you would like to be involved with the agenda, items of that nature, that is the second Monday prior to the meeting. Our agenda gets created, we have a draft agenda the Tuesday prior to the meeting. So we have to have every, every request and all of this information the second Monday prior to that, because we're already putting a draft agenda together the Tuesday prior. It goes to council president and so forth, and we work on that, and then it goes to the council drop on Friday. So we're always working ahead. If anybody has any questions regarding that, I can certainly answer that, you know, at a later time. But I greatly appreciate everyone understanding the timeline that we have and, and the items that we need to follow through with, and, and I thank you all.
President Paul, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Judith, as I've been out and about talking to various vendors and stuff, we're one of the few boroughs that do not have that application online. Is there, I know it's possible, I, I really advise that that would help a lot of things.
Certainly, no, there's, there's so many things that we have on the list that we would like to accomplish, and as we talked, we're, we've been understaffed and, and we've have a lot of issues with, you know, not having staff in the office for several reasons. So in the future, we, we plan on doing a lot of new things with the, with the website and, and all sorts of things. So thank you for that. We, it's a wonderful suggestion, and there are many other things that we would like to add to that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our action items. Item 8A, consider a motion to appeal zoning hearing decision regarding 70 East Bridge Street, Morrisville.
So moved.
I would, I would, I would say what your motion specifically would be.
Oh.
There isn't.
Is it, is it to appeal?
I thought.
To appeal.
Well, should it be, well, I'm asking this solicitor, oh, so it should, as it's read?
Well, as it's read really doesn't give which way you would be going. My recommendation would be only to make a motion if it is your consideration to file a, file an appeal of the zoning hearing board decision. Otherwise, the most, otherwise the item could just fail for lack of motion.
So consider a motion to file and appeal.
Yes.
And the rest is?
And if you.
Zoning hearing decision.
So do you still want to move that way, Ms. Sherlock?
Well, I, I already know how I'm gonna vote, but I just want to get it moving, so I thought I'd make the motion, but if somebody else wants to make it instead of me, that's fine.
So you are, you are making, I mean, it's okay if you're making the motion, you are making the motion to file the appeal.
Motion, that's what I think the body wanted originally, is that correct?
Sure.
So that's what we're gonna do, and then we can vote yea or nay when it happens, right?
Okay.
So this, so to explain it, we can have the solicitor explain what this would actually mean.
Right, but right now, okay, so we do have a motion.
I second it.
There you go, okay.
Okay, there you go. Now, discussion.
So, so this motion, 70 East Bridge Street used to be a smoke shop. And we had passed an ordinance last July that would prohibit smoke shops from being within certain radiuses of state parks, churches, schools, et cetera. The canal being considered a state park. Unfortunately, there was a clause in the, in the policy that says that if something was a smoke shop, then it can continue as a smoke shop. So this gentleman went and filed an appeal with the zoning board in order to open a smoke shop that he had just purchased from, from the old owner. And much to my dismay, the zoning board approved his appeal, and this building is going to continue to be a smoke shop. So our, if I'm not wrong with the solicitor, our only option is to go against the zoning board and file an appeal with the courts, I guess?
Yes, it would be filed with the Bucks County Court of Common Police.
In order to see if we could prohibit that building from being a smoke shop again.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
So in voting yes, you're voting to appeal the decision, correct? And in voting no, it means you're just going to let it be? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to confirm. Thanks.
You're voting not to appeal. Put it differently.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to confirm who was the second on the motion?
Catherine.
Ms. Danko.
Catherine.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Just by way of discussion, just to follow up on the vice president's comments, even though this is a horrible result, and we're very frustrated by it, the law is the law, and the law is against us here, and that's why the zoning hearing board found the way it did, we can still try to appeal, but personally, I think it would be a waste of time and money, but that's, that's, that's the issue on the table. It's not, do we like smoke shops or not, it's, do we think we have any legitimate grounds for appeal that we might prevail?
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
And to add to that, it's just, in my mind, it's throwing good money after bad. It's, I just, we don't have the case.
Anybody else?
Do we know for sure that we don't have a case?
We've been advised that it will be very, very, very uphill battle.
I know, but if we, if we want to change the town, in my opinion, I'm going to vote yes, because I would like to have every opportunity in order to stop some of the stuff that is happening in town.
Mrs. Solicitor, is it fair to ask you to give us an legal analysis, or is that, is that plodally inappropriate?
I would say, it's not that it's inappropriate, that we don't want to get into that in this situation in a forum where.
Got it. And it can be used against us in further litigation, of course. A foolish of me. Okay, any other discussion then at this point? Okay, all in favor?
I'll do a roll call.
Oh, we'll do a roll call on this one, Virginia.
Okay, yes. Ms. Engelhardt?
No.
Ms. Lavo?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. Reness?
No.
Mrs. Murray?
No.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Mrs. Murray?
No.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Motion fails, 5-3, 3-5, anyway. Item 8B, call for a motion to approve entering into a one-year agreement with Huff Associates to collect and submit the 2022 Recycling Performance Grant data for $4,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Item 8C, call for a motion to approve the Borough Manager's execution of 2023 service agreement with Tom Josiah Consulting LLC to assist with Borough accounting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Can I ask a question, President?
Ma'am.
Does this mean we're locked in for the entire 2023?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second question, Mr. Paul.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any, any idea how long this will continue with this, with Mr. Josiah?
Until we hire a finance director.
Their billing is not more than what the finance director would cost, correct?
That is correct.
Depending upon how many hours they put in.
It's true, even though it was $12,000 for the month of December.
That's not for the month of December, it would be for--
We paid in the month of December.
We paid that in the month of December. That was quite a lot of work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8D, call for a motion to approve payment number one final dated January 3, 2023, regarding 2022 CDBG curb ramp program in the amount of $202,400 to T. Schiefer Contractors, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Who would the second be?
Andrew.
Andrew? Thank you.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I had mentioned at, I think it was last month's meeting, with regards to this particular corner of Mercer and Hillcrest, there is a manhole cover that sits higher than the actual ramp that they put in, and it's a tripping hazard. And also, what happened when we had the, a lot of the rain and the cold, that entire block was iced because it, the water's not going down to the drain because of the pitch. I just don't want to, I mean, I realize they did the work, but, I mean, maybe John can talk to the punch list, I don't know. But I just think that there could be, it's not getting any better.
John Leiter?
Yes, I met John Leiter.
No one's made me aware of that, so I can look at it tomorrow.
Is the manhole cover in the concrete or in the street?
The manhole covers, no, in the grassy area. Not in the street.
Where is this? Hillcrest and Mercer.
It's just not, it's always been up like that. You're telling me, okay.
Well, it's--
They cut it out, and now they will-- So you'll see, but also, the water got there, the chunks of the gravel, the pitch is long, and the gravel is actually sitting in the grid. I couldn't remove the gravel from the grid.
My guys are doing storm drains, so I'll just send them up to that area and take a look at it tomorrow. I'll look at it also. That stays as far as I'm concerned.
Is there any way, if we approve this, is there any way, I mean, once we approve it, they don't have to come back and fix anything, right?
No, there's a maintenance agreement. So we'll certainly, we'll certainly bring this to their attention immediately.
Yeah, I mean, because obviously, the, I mean, what they did is it's a handicap ramp, so it's very low to the ground, and the water's just not making its way down there. I only went down, it's pure, it was pure ice.
Certainly, and the engineer does do inspections in regards to this, so we'll certainly bring it to their attention.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to appointments to fill vacancies. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, 8D, of course. 8D is a call for motion, let me find it, yeah, call for a motion to approve layout submitted to council for murals to be painted on the snack bar at Williamson Park.
I so moved. Can we add "at no cost to the borough"? At no cost to the borough.
I don't think that's part of the motion.
Okay, it doesn't have to be. I'm asking because it was questions and--
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So I'm just looking at these sketches right now, and it's the snack bar that has the murals. And it seems like these sketches are an homage to the pool. So one, I have two questions. One, is that what we want down there? And two, it used to be a snack bar, but if we were ever to do anything with that building, what is it that we would do? Judith, do you know, Ms. Dango?
I know that there was discussion about restrooms for that area in the past. I believe that's what council had planned.
Well, we had applied for a grant to put a handicap restroom, yes, but that was 10 years ago.
I believe the proposed use in the future would be the same.
Was there at one time someone that wanted to open up a ice cream shop there?
I don't know if it was ice cream, but it was, I think it was hot chocolate and coffee and then, and some kind of a--
It's what he goes, right?
Fire, like a fire pit in the evening.
Hot dog, was a hot dog place.
I can actually, so yes, at one point, there was somebody that came forward with a plan to put an ice cream shop there. I personally came forward a couple, maybe two or three years ago with a plan to put a coffee shop there, but the roof and the cost of the roof repair was the biggest questions. But, but yeah, there's been a couple of proposals, but who knows what could happen someday. Like, I know, you said it was talked about being bathrooms as well, but, but as for the two proposals to use it for things, those two things did happen.
So you're saying, what kind of condition is the roof in?
I don't know, I was just told it needed very expensive repairs. I didn't dive much deeper into it after that.
I think Mr. Leiter could probably answer that. We do, the Borough does use the property--
The last, the last time I saw the inside of that building was probably 30 years ago. Is that building like--
It probably looks--
I'll just, can that building be used for anything?
We use it for storage for trash cans, things like that we use down the park. That's all we use it for.
The stuff that can get wet.
Well, that doesn't, there's a hole in, there was a hole in the roof. My guys patched it and sealed it. But, but the plywood, it's all up on that, has to be completely, would have to be completely ripped off. And then look at, and then look at the joists and see if they're any good. There's been years and years of water leaking in that.
Well, when Base was here, he said that the building was, should have been knocked down, right?
Right, we looked, that's what Nancy said, we looked to put a, get a grant to put a bathroom in there. We were also kind of told, if you put a bathroom there, you're probably gonna, they would probably rather you put a whole new building there. Bring one in, bring, you know, a modular in and put it in, that's kind of the thing to do, and cheaper to do. And to retro that, I don't see any reason why we would want to even put any money, we wouldn't put any money into it.
Because eventually, eventually the roof will collapse into that, correct?
If we don't, well, yeah.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's, it's nice that it looks, and I'm, if you want to paint murals and fish and pretzels and hot dogs on it, that's good. But when you're driving down Delmore Avenue, up on that, up by the Bowen Alley, and you're coming down Delmore, you're high enough, and if the roof were to collapse into that thing and you're driving on Delmore, you're gonna look over to your right-hand side and you'll probably see a building without a roof on it?
Yeah, we wouldn't let it, obviously, yeah.
And then what would we do with it then? Just knock it down, or?
That's up to council. That would be up to council what they would want to do.
It's made of cinder block.
I would, to me, I would think, just my own personal opinion, if you put a mural up there, with the matter, eventually, we decide, you decide to do something else with that building, you knock the building down.
Yeah, because--
The mural's not something, hey, it's nice and they're doing it to make it look nice.
Right.
But if you have other uses for it, that's--
We keep it, make it look nice with a mural until we do something--
Decide what you want to do with that building.
Because I don't think I've had anybody come to me and say anything other than, why didn't they knock that building down when they took the pool out?
Good question.
For that, or it's holding up the roof over the picnic area if it's--
Now that's what it is, it's like, it's holding that.
It's a roof--
Well, that roof is newer, right? Is that roof over the picnic table area newer?
It was, no, it was refurbished.
Refurbished, right.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but it was still the same design.
Yeah.
So in your, in your opinion, John, is the building savable, or if something was going to be done there, would you recommend it be knocked down? And I asked you because you're in there the most.
Yeah, it's savable, I do think it's savable. You put a whole new roof on it, it's a block building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where you're at with it.
Well, the mural's hurt it at all, John, that's why I'm--
That's, you know, that's what I'm saying, it makes it look, it makes it look good. I have seen no reason why we would--
Thank you.
Wouldn't want to do that. But yeah, eventually, it could be knocked down if you guys decide to put something else there.
President Paul, for those who don't know what's going on, is, there's a youth coalition, and it's made up of youth and community leaders that are guiding these young people. And the whole philosophy is the therapeutic community. It's about teaching young people that if they engage and do something positive in their community, that they'll want to stay in our community, or they'll want to do things, they won't do things to hurt the community. There's a, and this has been going on, this is a very well-studied philosophy and program and stuff. So what happened was that the youth made several submissions, and I think the leadership decided on the four that was submitted. So they're, they're generated by youth. And if you look at, except for the swimming scene, you can tell it's young people. But it's also young people coming together and community volunteers to come out and do this and paint. And it, I mean, we had little ones all the way up to some college students, and they were in, talking and sharing and having a great time and real committed, just like the one that's under the, is it the freeway?
The overpass, yeah.
Again, I was, I mean, I was on council then, but I came out and volunteered, and it was police officers and community leaders and just neighbors and youth and college students coming together and working, I think several weeks it took us to do it. I know some of you in the audience were participants in helping. So it helps, what they're trying to do is, is to help build a stronger and better community by these projects. And it's been talked about, we want to do more. We're trying to get businesses who will let the kids do one on the side of their building and stuff. It's to promote a sense of community. And, and for those of you who were able to go down there yesterday, it was cold, but the kids didn't seem cold, I was cold. You know, and they hardly, didn't even want to stop for pizza. I mean, they were just so committed to that. And so this project's gonna go on, it's not gonna get done overnight, it's gonna, you know, they'll be setting dates as it warms up so you can start doing the color. But any of you as council members can go down there and help. Anybody in this audience can go down there and help paint. So it's all about community, and that's my plug.
Mr. Parker? Parker, oh my gosh, you're gonna shoot me. Mr. Paul? Hey, not in a while.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody we didn't mention this evening, and that's Joe Kemp, who is Chair of the Artists of Marsville. He was actually the leader in framing it all out, charting it out, and doing the project. So thank you to him as well.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Mr. Lubin.
Since the art group, or perhaps your Parks group, has different, has other than these four pictures, and there's no swimming pool at the, down there now, nor will there be ever, why not submit seven or eight or nine pictures so council can decide which ones are more appropriate, or at least take out the ones that's less appropriate? Would that be possible?
I would like to answer that. The students that worked with Mr. Kemp, it took them quite a bit to get these four. So to ask them to go back and figure out some more, I'm not seeing the purpose of that. They are gonna do more. They have, there are two businesses that would like something on the side of their building, and they'd like to refurbish the stage area that's in the back, they want to redo that as well, but now--
Will council be advised of that beforehand or after everything is done?
Well, to refurbish, if they're gonna just paint the same thing at the stage, the same exact thing, I mean, we can let you know when they're gonna do it, but they're held captive to the weather, so--
That's not, the picture, the content of the pictures, will council have a chance to look at that prior, or is it gonna do another last second, oh, we do this already, so we want forgiveness instead of permission?
Thank you, I'm done, thank you.
Be done.
Can I ask, were these Marsville students that did these murals?
Yes.
Yes. I'm also gonna ask that going forward, that there is better communication with council and letting us know what is going on. I didn't get an email that there was any painting going on yesterday. It just seems that there should be more involvement.
I'm responsible for that, I'll make sure that you're fully involved as soon as I hear about it. You too, Mr. Lubin.
And I would just ask, moving forward again, I know I've talked about this many times, an application must take place at the Borough Office, and then we can start the process and procedures, so--
And I apologize, I thought that had already been done, so I really apologize. But we, when I, when John handed me this stuff and said it wasn't in, I was shocked. And so we worked our butt off to get it all done and get it down to you, and I sincerely apologize, that's not what I wanted to attend, you know, and happen.
And thank you, Catherine. No, I, again, I'm just reiterating, you know, we talk about communication, it really needs to start at the Borough Office and move, and then move its way to, I will move it to Borough Council. So I greatly appreciate everyone working together in the future. And, you know, if, if it's Borough property, it must be approved by Borough Council. So even if it's a continuation somewhere else, each application is separate and different, and it must go through the Borough Office and it must be approved by Borough Council. If it's private property, there would be a different application that would be required, and we can talk about that in the future.
My understanding that private property doesn't need to get approval--
No, it must come into the Borough Office, like, I'll let our council--
Let's cross that bridge we're gonna come to, we're not discussing--
Okay.
--property, let's keep this simple. If that's okay, anyone else? Okay. I think we'd need a roll call for this one, Virginia.
Yes. Ms. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Ms. Lawal?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Reness?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to one. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you for the understanding that there was some missteps and miscommunication.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to add to that. Uh, Mr. Paul, thank you for, you know, admitting there's been some breakdown in communication. I understand everybody, Andrew, everybody here makes some really, really good points about how this process should and could go. We've always supported Judith on the fact that everything needs to be written into the borough, so, you know, she and other people know what's going on. I just want to be very careful with saying all that, that I don't want to ever come off the wrong way and, and urge people not to want to do good things around here. So, thank you for listening.
Yeah, I agree. We just want to move forward at this point. Enough with, uh, the rehashing and finger pointing all that. We're going to move forward. I'm happy that we're, we're voting to continue the murals, and, um, I think it's, it will serve the community's best interests. Thank you all. Now we'll move on to filling the vacancies in various boards and councils. The Morrisville Economic Development Corporation. There are two three-year term appointments, each expiring January 21st, 2026. We received letters of interest from Joan Doreto Week, is it Week or Waik? Like, John DeWilde and Robin Reithmeyer. Is it Reithmeyer? Okay. In any case, we've got two, two appointments to fill. I guess we can take nominations, and we vote yes or no, on each nominee as he comes up, correct, Mr. Solicitor?
And Council President, if I may, I was asked by the EDC to provide an email that came through, uh, late, informing council members and the mayor that, uh, Housam Jalad's resignation for MEDC was being, taking place, was going to take place immediately. And they asked if council would fill this position quickly. So this was in everyone's packet, uh, and it was also emailed to everyone, uh, immediately as soon as it came in. So I'm not sure if council would like to, uh, deal with that this evening, since you...
No, we're going to put it off, for the reasons that Mr. Rice pointed out, I think, with respect to MMA. I don't want to surprise anybody. Um, we'll just, we'll deal with it at the next meeting.
I, I have to disagree with you.
Go ahead.
And I think you can't make that decision, council has to make that decision. These are openings that have been advertised, and they've been on the agenda, and they are on the website, and whether there's one, two, three, or five openings, um, it has been advertised. When it's not advertised, I thoroughly agree, but it, whether there's two or three terms, it really doesn't matter. People know that there's an opening, and the public should be putting in their resume, or, or letters of interest. So, um, I think that we should fill all three terms.
Mr. Parker?
Okay.
Mr. Paul? While I hate to disagree, but this, we just found this out last night. So if we didn't think that two weeks was enough time, I certainly don't think 24 hours is enough. If you want to take a vote on it, go right ahead.
How do we do this?
I mean, take a vote on it.
This is kind of, this is a little bit different from the MMA appointment, because on the, for the MMA appointment, we have two positions advertised on our agenda to fill. Here, we only have two positions advertised on the agenda. It doesn't mean you couldn't, but same thing you did with item 8E, you'd have to take a motion to...
Amend?
Amend it, and to add the third appointment versus...
Okay.
Just doing what was on the agenda, so, so we'll have to make the motion to amend it to add a third appointment.
I'm going to make a motion to amend it to add the third appointment, so it would be three three-year term appointments expiring 1/21/2026.
Okay, any second.
So, okay, any second.
Mr. Lubin, I'm sorry, do you second it?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion. Okay, let's vote. All, let's do a roll call.
Who are we voting on which?
We're voting on expanding the appointments from two to three for the MEDC. For, for filling vacancy tonight, we're going to fill two or three vacancies. So we're voting on, are you going to, are you going to add a vacancy?
May I ask, uh, Council President, now, just real, real quick, you had a letter, uh, Judith?
Correct.
What's the email say? Just real quick.
It says, "Dear Judith, council members and mayor, below, please find Housam Jalad's resignation from the Morrisville Economic Development Corporation. We hope that you will be able to find someone to fill this position quickly. Thank you. In advance, Robin M. Reithmeyer, Chairperson, Morrisville Economic Development Corporation."
Yeah, I'm not opposed to doing all three. I mean, I'll, I'll vote yes for this. I mean, since I've been up here, how many times do we have, you know, an opening, and it goes on and on? And we have three positions. I'm not saying next month that we won't fill it, but, I mean, we got three letters, we have three openings. I mean, if anyone here can tell me that it's the end of the world if we do it this way, I mean, you know, why don't we just get it over with, and Robin can have her EDC and, and get moving in 2023, so...
Any other comments?
I already made my comment.
Okay, let's vote. Um, do we need to do roll call for this?
I'd appreciate that.
Roll call, Virginia.
Yes. Ms. Engelhard?
I vote for all three.
And yes?
Yes, okay, sorry, I'm a little confused.
Sorry, I just want to simplify it.
We're changing it to, yeah, to make it, to make it three appointments.
It's getting late.
It was yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lomel?
Yes.
Ms. Zilbene?
Yes.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Mr. Paul?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Motion carries, six to two. So we'll be filling three, three vacancies. Okay, so I'll take, and they're all for the same term, um, so it doesn't matter.
Are they? I don't think they are.
I thought they're all expiring January 21, 26, no?
No.
Then what's the other one? What's, what's Housam's?
His expires January 22nd of 2025.
So his is shorter.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, then, um, to, I, I'd like to nominate Robin Reithmeyer, and...
For what?
One at a time, right?
Yeah.
For the, um, expiring 1/21/26.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
Ms. Lomel?
Yes.
Ms. Zilbene?
No.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
I believe that was a yes.
I, I think so, yes. Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Six to, Ms. Reithmeyer is elected. Next, do we have any nominations for the other term expiring 2026?
I would like to, go ahead.
Joan, Joan Doreto?
Go ahead, Scott.
Second?
Second, or, it's a nomination, so we don't do that, I'm sorry.
Oh, you don't, okay, never, never mind, never mind. Okay, uh, roll call.
Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
Ms. Lomel?
Yes.
Ms. Lubin?
Yes.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Seven one, Ms. Doreto Week is elected for the 2026. And now, for the term expiring 1/21/2025, any nominations?
Mr., yeah, I think it almost would, but I think it's the second, January 2nd, isn't it?
January 21.
January 21, according to this. Oh, January 22nd, I'm sorry.
Yes, January 22nd of 2025.
I stand corrected, January 22nd, 2025. I was robbing him of a day. I'm sorry, do we have, was someone nominated?
I don't think anybody did yet, no.
Any nominations?
I'll nominate John DeWilde.
Roll call, Virginia.
Yes. Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Ms. Lubin?
Yes.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Seven to one, Mr. DeWilde is elected, so we've filled all the vacancies on the Economic Development Corporation. Moving on to the Environmental Advisory Council, we have two three-year appointments, one term expiring December 19, 2025, and the other term expiring January 21, 2026. About one month difference. Uh, we have letters of interest from Mary Herenda and Bruce Stevens.
I'd like to make a motion, or make a nomination for Mary Herenda for December 19, 2025 position.
Um, roll call, Virginia.
Yes. Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
Ms. Lomel?
No.
Ms. Lubin?
No.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
The six to? Six to. Ms. Herenda is elected to the 2025 term. Now the term expiring January 21, 2026.
Bruce Stevens.
Roll call, Virginia, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, who, who did the nomination?
Scott, I think.
Yeah, Scott.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, and, um, Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
Ms. Lomel?
No.
Ms. Lubin?
No.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
I think that was a no.
I think that was a no also. Okay, uh, Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Five three, Mr. Stevens is elected. Now the zoning hearing board. Uh, one three-year appointment expiring January 2nd, 2026. Letters of interest from Peter Birkin, Housam Jalad, and Suzanne Zukowski.
I would like to nominate Suzanne Zukowski for the appointment ending January 2nd, 2026, realizing that she would have to step down as the alternate.
Right.
She's been an alternate now for about eight years.
She was a regular, she was, she was a member when I first started, so she's also been a regular.
She, only for about three or four months.
Any case, um, roll call, Virginia, please.
Yes. Yes. Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Lomel?
No.
Ms. Lubin?
No.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Six to two? Okay, Ms. Zukowski is elected.
Mr. Paul, that would mean that she has to step down as the alternate, and then we would need to vote on an alternate.
Well, don't we have to, don't we have to just post the alternate as an open position, and ask people to...
I, um, I would look to the solicitor on that one.
That would be my recommendation, yes, you know, she first, first...
Yeah. As opposed to just automatically send these other, what the alternates...
Correct.
Yeah, I think so. Does everyone agree with that? I can't make that decision myself.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, it, it, since it is, I mean, obviously, it's a similar position, but it's a different position, so you would have to first one, see if these two people would want to be the alternates.
Right.
And as well, see as anyone else who may be interested, but didn't necessarily want the full position yet, so...
Got it. Okay, so we'll do that. We'll post the alternate for next time. Now the municipal authority. Um, we have two five-year appointments, one expiring January 2nd, 2028, one expiring 20, January 22nd, 2024. Which one was Mr. Rice talking about, the 2024 one?
Correct, yes.
Probably 24, that's the one Debbie, Debbie would be up in 24, correct?
Okay, and, uh, so the question is whether there's been, whether, whether everyone's had a sufficient opportunity to, to learn about it, to apply. And, I'm, just to, just to reiterate, or just to review where we stand, we had it posted on, we had it on the agenda. Do we have it where we usually have the vacancies on the, on the website?
The way, the way we post the vacancies on the website all the time, yes, it's been posted, but not for specific terms. We don't post for specific terms. Virginia, can you reiterate how it's worded, please?
Yes, actually, I can, um, right, as we speak, it's the two five-year appointments, one expiring 1/22/24, one expiring 1/02/28.
It's only since the 5th of, of this month, though, correct?
No, it was, it was since the last meeting that these two were on, were updated on the website.
Yeah, I guess I still, I don't understand...
Looking at the roster, I...
Mr. Rice's problem.
The only one that was going to come up was Jane's. But, but it didn't say specific, it just said there was an opening. So just like the EDC, whether it's one, two, three openings, people were aware that there is an opening, and they had the opportunity to apply. And, and actually, um, the MMA posting has been opened, it was on the November agenda meeting, and it was in the December agenda meeting, and it's been online since then as well. So it's been online for over two months.
Okay, well, again, I'm not, I'm not authorized to make that decision myself, so let's vote on that. Let's go quick, Ms. here, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I do have just one quick question. As far as it being on the agenda, what, what was on the agenda, Helen, that you're referring to?
That there was, there was an opening, there was a, an opening.
I'm just wondering whose opening it was, I'm just curious.
It doesn't matter whose opening it is, it was an opening. It was listed as an opening for the MMA board.
No, but, but, but Mr. Rice's point was, there weren't two openings, and if he, if, he wouldn't, he was only going to apply if there were an extra opening, because he didn't want to run, he didn't want to...
Interfere with...
Push Jane Berger out of the possibility of, of filling the other. So I get that, and, and that's reasonable, but let's, seriously, um, I, I think we should, I think we should do whatever the majority of council wants to do, and I don't, I can argue either side of that case, and, and I, I'm not going to make, make the decision myself, so let's vote on it.
Can we get a, an idea from the solicitor?
Yeah, uh, yeah, our recommendation from a legal standpoint would be, vote on both of them. I mean, you don't have to nominate someone for the second one, so if the one gets a nomination, affirmative vote of council, meaning five or more votes, that one does, or if you...
Fair enough.
Or someone else doesn't, they don't get enough votes, they don't get enough votes.
Okay, fair, that, that, that works for me. Any objections to that?
Nope. So we're voting for both?
You're, you're making nominations for one, and if someone makes a nomination for a second, you can vote on it. I'm not saying you have to, you don't have to nominate, you all have to nominate someone if you don't want to, but if someone does, you do need to vote on it.
I'm going to nominate myself for the January 2nd, 2028.
And I'm going to nominate Jane Berger for...
No, one at a time.
Are we not doing that? Okay, because there was a time when we did it that way. Okay.
You nominate someone, and we're going to see if the person gets the votes.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, Virginia, please.
Yes. Ms. Engelhardt?
No.
Ms. Lalow?
Yes.
Ms. Lubin?
Yes.
Ms. Van Ness?
No.
Mrs. Murray?
Okay, um, if it was going to be voting, are we voting somebody or are we voting?
We're voting on Helen Halal for the term expiring 2028 on MMA.
Okay, no.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Three to five, no.
I nominate Jane Berger for the 2028 position. Roll call, Virginia, please.
Yes. Ms. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Ms. Lalow?
I'm sorry, who are we voting for?
Jane Berger.
Yes.
Ms. Lubin?
Yes.
Ms. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
I'll nominate Helen for the 2024 one for next year.
Roll call, Virginia, please.
Ms. Engelhardt?
No.
Ms. Lalow?
Yes.
Ms. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Okay, six to. Ms. Lalow is elected. Okay, anything, anything else we need on that section? We're done, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. Any other business tonight?
Actually, I have a few things.
Can I take them from the audience? Am I allowed to take?
I wish I could make this announcement.
Oh, okay, well, first, yeah, I want to announce that we have, we have one appointment open for an alternate for the remainder of the six-year term on Civil Service Commission expiring December 16, 2025. And of course, now we also have the alternate for the zoning hearing board open.
Thank you, Council President.
Not the zoning hearing board.
What was it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the alternate for the zoning hearing board.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Yeah.
Guys, I'm still feeling bad. I'm going to hang up.
Okay, thank you so much for hanging with us this long, Carlita. Really appreciate it.
Okay, good. I'll see you.
Get well soon. Get well.
Get well.
You'll go there. Get well. Thank you. Bye-bye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sherlock, you want to say something other business or?
Just a couple things. I'll start off with the positive thing. I just want to thank the residents who decorated for the holidays this year, no matter what holiday they decorated for. But a lot of people went all out and I think it just shows that, you know, there are a lot of people out there that do have pride and care. And we're grateful for that. We had a question, or actually an inquiry regarding the fire inspection. Pastor Taylor was here last year, or last month. And I'm just wondering, he asked, do you know if it's been satisfied with our code? Mrs. Danko, or what's going on with?
I know that it was reported to code and that they were going to follow through.
Sit down, okay. And it's my understanding that any, any house that's turned into two or three apartments is subject to this. That's how I understand it. Is that correct? So even if it's a single family, it's a home and it has two apartments or three apartments, they would need a key lock. Is that right?
I cannot comment on that, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
And we're talking about two different items. The knockbox ordinance is one item, and then the fire inspections are another. So that's why I'm saying I can't comment because I'm not sure.
I didn't ask the question correctly. Do they need a knockbox? If you have a house that has two or three apartments in it, my understanding, the way they were explaining it, is that they also need a knockbox. So that's what I guess is the question.
I would have to review the ordinance.
Okay, thanks. How's the gas boy going? Is that good?
It's going well.
That's good. And is there any movement on the roof?
Yes, we're working with the architect.
Yeah, so we're getting close, I hope.
Are these things in your manager report?
Yes.
Also, I wanted to know if this body would consider looking into their grants available for electrical vehicle, electrical vehicle infrastructure. And we've talked about this before, having some charging stations, and I'm just wondering, there are grants available. And I just, I'd like to see some progress and let us move a little bit forward.
This was an item that I did review, and I haven't found anything that does not require a match. And at this point, we had decided that we weren't going to apply for anything that needed a match. We were going to stay focused on the Williamson Park grant and the grants that we have currently and follow through with those grants, and then eventually we would look for more. So I have not found anything that would not require a match.
And if I find one that doesn't require a match, maybe the
If council is amenable, you know that I would certainly be happy to help.
Thank you.
Yes, because we've written, I've written several grants with, that did not require a match. The pickup truck with the salt spreader and plow, which we received, the police car, so, so yes, anything that does not have a match, as long as council is amenable for me to entertain that, I would be happy to help.
Are we getting reports from Portnoy about our garbage?
Yes, we do.
Do? Because we used to get them. I'm just wondering, so we are getting them?
We do.
And then, one thing that Keystone did, and
If I may, Councilwoman Nancy, all of the items that we do get, when you see the financials, you'll see that those items are incorporated in there. So if you see delinquent sanitation, you know that's coming from Portnoy. So there's no need to provide reporting or, or, you know, items of that nature or accounts or anything of that nature, because you're seeing that in the financials.
But are all of those just from Portnoy, or do people just come in and say, look, I still owe you $500, and they pay it, though?
Anything that's delinquent goes through Portnoy.
Everything.
Yeah, we don't, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We, we used to get, we did get, and I don't know if this is something Barry I said could do, but they would give, we got a report that would be, it would tell us the expense versus the cost. And we did get that from Keystone last year. Now, I'm not proponent, I'm not a proponent of Keystone. I'm fine with Barry. I'm just saying, it was something that they would give us. It was expense versus cost and give us an analysis, not every month, but say every six months, to know how much that's going out, how much is that costing us? Like, we're getting money in, but I don't, there's no sign of separation.
Certainly, I can, I can ask, I said if they can accomplish that.
Okay.
I, I don't want to speak negatively, but I don't believe those prior reports were accurate from what we were looking, from what we were going over.
Okay.
You're just talking about adding up every, all the revenues we get from their fees and licenses against what we're paying them to do their service?
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds pretty simple, right?
Yeah, it sounds simple. I mean, I know the UCC gets, what, $4.50 or something, so take that out, but
We have, we have ISET doing many more items than we had Keystone doing. We have them working on other items that we did not have Keystone working on.
And what would the purpose of this report be? Wouldn't we like to know? Well, we have to have code, so. And we're not a moneymaker, so we're never going to have more revenue than, than what it's going to cost us.
I
No reason not to.
It's no reason not to know.
I'm just wondering why you wanted to see it, that's all.
I think that we, we are, you know, this is a fiduciary body that has to pay attention to what's we're spending, what we're sending out.
No, but we see their expenses on a monthly basis on the financials.
We do, we do, but
More information is never bad.
I'm just asking why she wanted that report. Something I may have not used.
Okay, we have a finance meeting next week, right? Is that right, Andrew?
What we, Andrew and I had just spoke about that. We're, we're most likely going to cancel the first finance meeting of the year.
Okay. All right. Oh, one quick thing, and then I'm done. It's about the pond. The owner of the fireplace, fire store, fireworks store, he, the pond is his charge. And he's been struggling with it. He thinks, he's still convinced there's a leak coming from the canal. I don't know. I spoke to the, you know, canal about it, Delaware Canal. They said that they have no, they have no record of that. They've tested the water. So I don't know. So he's, he's all ready to just fill it in. So, which, I know we don't own it, but I'm not sure I want it filled in. I'd like to make it a feature versus, you know, a parking lot.
I apologize. I'm not, I'm not with the understanding of, is this a stormwater pond, or is it a?
No, it's the pond downtown, behind the 7-Eleven.
Okay.
Yeah. And I was wondering about the new owners down there. What, do they have any visions?
And you, you just can't fill in a pond. There's, there's DEP and all types of
Correct.
items that you would have to go through.
I'm just letting the
Yes. No, I just want to say that. I'm not sure what's, what's being discussed. I have not heard from the owner of the fireworks store at all, so I don't know anything about.
Yeah, well, I don't think he's talked to anybody in charge. Okay, let's put it that way.
Sure. So I'm sorry, what was your question?
I was just wondering if the new owners of the shopping center have any visions about revamping it, changing it, painting it. I don't know. I mean, I know that it has new owners.
We haven't heard anything of yet.
Yeah, so probably status quo. All right, thank you.
I'd like to say, down on Philadelphia Avenue and South Pennsylvania Avenue, there is a restaurant that opened. It's been open for quite a while. It's going on almost a year. It's called The Eagle's Nest. And I'm just going to give them some kudos. The food is very good. I'm sorry, The Bird's Nest. The Eagles was there before. I'm sorry, Bird's Nest. They're really very good and their prices are reasonable. Go try them out. I think they're open for breakfast. What's that? Yeah, I was talking to the owner. They said that her daughter is in marketing and she's going to start doing some things, but they're not quite there yet. But it's, it's very nice and quaint inside. Obviously, you've been there, right? Oh. Oh. Oh, yeah, they're working on it, but you should just go in there. The food is spectacular. Yeah, and I know that in the back, that used to be The Eagles. Okay, that's good.
Tell us how it is.
Yeah, but in the back, they're going to start, they're working on getting like a takeout. So, so that'll be nice as well for the neighborhood. Yeah, definitely check it out.
Any other plugs? I have a real quick correction. Sorry if this thing isn't allowed when I get close. I have a real quick correction. I was just informed by somebody on the EDC board that tomorrow's meeting is not open to the public, and I see somebody here on the board nodding their head to that. So, so with that being said, I will be attending the meeting, so if anybody has something they, you know, like me to ask or get back to the mall, feel free to give me a call anytime tomorrow. But I just wanted to make that correction because I just got it in real quick. Thank you.
It was invited guests.
I think it was invited guests, as I understood it. And it's to talk about a community calendar, so of events, and that's why, like, I was invited and stuff. But I think there's
The person I asked earlier said it was open, and then I just got that text, so we got the tiebreaker right here.
I have one more thing. I just wanted to say that PennDOT has been in touch with, with us and they are moving forward to put the 25 mile an hour speed zone down on South Pennsylvania Avenue. And then they're going to be working on painting that right on the street so that the trucks can see it from, you know, up in their cab. I know that they've been working with the borough manager, so I'm not sure. They said early spring. So I said, is that February? And they laughed, said yes. Hopefully, it's sooner than, than April. So I'll be looking forward to that. So people in the first ward get used to driving 25 miles an hour. We don't want our officers ticketing you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'm seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you all for coming. Good night.
Jane, congratulations. Apparently you have the
Yes.
And Helen, congratulations as well.
Hi, Kelly. How are you doing? How are you?
You can see, this is going to help you, but yeah.